October 21st order. Um, this meeting is being recorded by Westford cat. This is an open meeting, so for all panelists who have access to the chat panel, I'd like to remind you to not use the function to discuss any of the content of a meeting, but to ask a question or any technical issues with the video concert conferencing platform, and please direct them to the organizers. All votes will be done by roll call. All attendees are muted upon arrival into the meeting platform to reduce unnecessary noise from disrupting a meeting. If an attendee wishes to contribute a question or comment, they may virtually raise their hand via the platform's control panel, and the chair will recognize and unmute the participant where they can voice their concerns similar to approaching the microphone at a live meeting. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the question functions. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate point. Due to limitations of the platform, attendees that are accessing the meeting via the telephone number at the bottom of the agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you do not have a webcam to participate. We have a full board tonight with us. Also Rebecca Chaney, um, land planner, Matt Salem, Assistant Land Planner, and I do not believe that Jeff Morrisette, the Land Use Director, is with us. So that being said, we have no minutes Rebecca, I see, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. First item on the agenda is 124 Main Street. The applicant is requested to withdraw the application without prejudice. Is there a motion to do so?
So.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott M?
Yep.
Scott F?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote in the affirmative. Second item on the agenda is 71 Powers Road. This has been continued a number of times. The last time, September 16th, with no discussion. Is there counsel here and where do we go?
Good evening, members of the board. Attorney Melissa Robbins from the firm of Shane and Farrell is on the line. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi there. Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, so we met with the board in August and would say we received significant comments at that meeting. Uh, we did not come to the meeting in September, and I will tell you why. Uh, the principal for the project, Peter DeCarolus, decided that he was not going to pursue the project any further. Um, but we have new principals in the project, the Palmer family. Um, and I do believe that Samuel Palmer is on the line. Um, they're excited to take over the project. They're ready to proceed. And they're looking forward to wrapping this up as I'm sure that the board, and I know I am. Um, the plan that the board has in their packet, I think this addresses one of the major concerns the board had at the last meeting, which was the proximity of the units to each other. Okay, I'm not saying this was the only comment of the board, but I'm trying to address the major comment before I proceed with any of the other, um, issues that the board had raised. This plan here has six units still, but what it does is spaces them out significantly. Uh, these units are 32 feet apart. Uh, far exceeds the zoning requirement. And we also took the board's suggestion of trying to stagger these units somewhat so they weren't just in a straight line around the cul-de-sac and even used a common driveway coming up on units two and three while staying well over 700 feet away from our commercial of butter that the board's concerned about. Uh, just that the board's aware, as you can see, unit six goes into the area known as Zero Powers Road. Uh, there is a legal question, um, even if the board's inclined to move a unit into there, whether or not the board can issue special permit relief for that lot since the existing pre-existing non-conformity doesn't exist on Zero Powers Road. Um, however, I did not want to send that question off to town council yet without direction from the board because I feel as though it's a waste of towns' resources if the board's not inclined to pursue a plan that has this layout. Uh, the Palmers do want to proceed with six units. I know that there was a question at the last meeting if we could go down, but it does become, I mean, not financially feasible to go forward with a project smaller than this. Um, I think that if the board was inclined to like this layout, we could do lots of things before the next meeting. I could certainly answer the question with town council as to moving structures into that new Zero Powers Road area that does not have existing pre-existing non-conformities. Uh, we can also finalize the plan for the board's, uh, vote with the open space amenities, the trailhead parking, the landscaping along Powers Road, the additional landscaping along the area of the Fletcher's, uh, the pocket park and the, uh, other recreational amenities the board had commented that they wanted would all fit on this plan. Um, I know that there were some questions about six units still at the last meeting, and I think that it would be helpful and that I know that we have it, the GIS map just showing the general area. If Matt Salem could just change to that plan. Matt Salem here?
I'm getting there, hold on.
Okay, thanks, Matt. There we go. All right, so our prod, our land is all of that area outlined in yellow. And I know the board's made very clear and we understand that we can't use the entire proximity of this land as buildable area. What we're using is the front portion of that area, and we've told the board that that's only 2.65 acres. Taking that into consideration and looking at the general area, the, the general neighborhood is really made up of the Vinebrook neighborhood. When I took a closer look at that Vinebrook community, those homes are all on lots that are less than half an acre. Uh, they actually range in size from about .45 to .48 acres. Uh, so they're all well below an acre. Uh, and they range, and I, because I know you're going to ask, they range in distance between structures between 40 and 50 feet. And there's some a little smaller and some are larger, but that's the general average range of that area there on Vinebrook. Uh, oh, thank you, that's even better, Matt. You can see that that's a, it really is a clustered development, smaller lots, .45 to .48. This is typical of an open space development, and if you mimic Vinebrook on our site on the 2.65 acres that we're proposing it on, it fits. Okay, if you go do the backwards math, about .45 acres is about 19,602 square feet. You multiply that by six, you get 17,612 square feet, and that's 2.7 acres. And we are on 2.65 acres. And what I'm saying, we're on 2.65 acres. I'm only talking about that front portion that we're building on. So when we're talking about density and we're talking about an open space development, and I'm telling you I'm building a smaller open space development here, I think that backing the picture up a little bit and looking at the surrounding area is helpful because I really do think this ties into the neighborhood area. Um, I would, I know that we're just here tonight seeking the board's input on the density number, and we have some other issues to, to work out if we go to a final plan, but I would like to hear the board's comments on, uh, going forward with a six-unit development with just the, with the 32-foot separation, if we can get the approval of town council.
Um, well, I'll, I'll open it up to the board.
Well, I, I'd like to kind of go back to where I left this thing. And I did review the minutes from the tape in the last meeting. But, um, I think, you know, my concern was, is it substantially less detrimental? And I think at the last meeting, I kind of went through what was there now, what is there now, which is two, two buildings, basically, this six units, triple everything. You go from, uh, and I, I'm not concerned about spacing as much as I'm concerned about the density of housing. Uh, you know, this is 32 feet. If you want to do the spacing thing, I think the Grodno, which we, that's kind of cited as, I don't know what the right word is, maybe a mistake or a hiccup for an applet, is 25 feet and there's four buildings there. This 32 is six, so I think the spacing still isn't, isn't significantly spaced far enough. But this is everything times three. Our criteria is substantially less detrimental. Three bathrooms to 12, three bedrooms to 12, three, four vehicles to 12. It's a times three. And this, I think that, that the density, this, it's not the spacing. I think this is a much more acceptable project, and I think there was some sentiment among the board somewhat overall last meeting, and there was significant discussion to reducing this to five. And I think it fits a lot better at five. I think you could make a case that a fair increase would be four. That five would be substantially more detrimental. If you look at all the criteria that we have on cheat sheet we were given, if you look at the criteria, I think it's not just a spacing issue. It's presented as a spacing issue. Six, six single-family homes, two and a half buildable acres. I think it's substantially more detrimental, which is there now, which is basically two homes. A, 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 a single family that was kind of hyped, somehow converted into a two-family and a very small ranch. That's what was there as residential use for a very long time. I am not supporting six units, plain and simple. I think it's too much on that piece of 2.6 acres, and I don't support six units, plain and simple. Only one member, that's my position on it. It's kind of where I was last time. I went down and walked through the Grodno. I kind of walked it off. I looked at it 100 times going by and went down there, walked around it myself. I said, you know what? This doesn't work. Well, this is six units. Seven feet isn't significant enough in a difference from what we did at the Grodno to convince me that this is a good project at that space, at that density.
I, I'll concur with Jimmy, particularly where that sixth unit is on that, on, on, uh, unacceptable land right now. That's zero.
Well, that land is part of the project, Paul. We just.
I understand it, but it hasn't been, uh, it hasn't been blessed yet.
Right.
I, I support fi, I'll support five, Melissa.
I just want to, and I, I appreciate that, Paul. And I just want to point out to, just to Jim's point, and I know, Jim, we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, but when we're looking at substantially more detrimental, just because you're increasing density and you're multiplying doesn't just in its own say that you're substantially more detrimental. You got to look at whether or not the change is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Does it have an impact to town services? I mean, I think that the traffic in this area for six units would not be impacted. Powers Road is a substantially, uh, traveled road. Uh, there's commercial uses that surround this, there's residential commercial uses that surround it, so the traffic would not be impacted. From a visual standpoint, you know what we have out there today. Uh, this project would be a substantial landscape improvement. It's certainly be a visual improvement to the direct about butters along Equestrian Way.
But that would apply also if it was five, Melissa. If it were visual improvement, if it was five, it was four, it was three, or it was two. It'd be a visual employment, improvement. So the improvement would be tearing that down and putting something there. Not necessarily six. Putting three there would be a substantial visual improvement. So I don't know that that hooks to the number six.
Right.
I have a problem with six units. I think Melissa's point, what's there now is a dump. Everybody wants it cleaned up. You know, it's, it's had a, a past. There's been some issues. Uh, it's just one of those things. I think this is spread out. If, if that unit six has to be in that zero area, that's fine. I, I originally said I'd be willing to give some relief over there if they could do that and spread it out. And I, and I think that, you know, it's in keeping with the neighborhood.
Uh, Melissa, just my thoughts on this too. Although I was one of the ones that was concerned more with the spacing, excuse me, than I was the units. I can't really disagree with anything that Jim said. And, and I know what we did down there in Graniteville. Um, I didn't go as, as, I didn't go as far as Jim did to assess the difference between the distance to those in that project as to the distance in these homes in this project, but I certainly won't contradict anything he said. You know, originally I had said, and, and perhaps even still today, I don't have serious concerns with the six units, but knowing how the procedure goes, Counselor, you don't have the votes.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in too. I had expressed my concerns with six units last time too, because I know we approved this originally as a commercial development, which I felt had had less impact on the town. Now, you know, we have six homes. I do think it impacts the town in that you're going to have potentially, uh, more schools, uh, more students for school. So that does financially impact the town and the town services. So I don't, I, I would be in agreement with Jim and Bob and, and Paul the same.
I suspect, I suspect, Counselor, you heard all those comments.
I heard all of those comments. And, and just so that you understand on the legal issue, Paul, that's exactly why, that is exactly why I didn't want to send it out to town council for review because I didn't want to waste town resources on, um, asking a legal question that wasn't going to be pertinent without the board giving me the direction to do so.
That is appreciated.
Oh, it wasn't, uh, wasn't because of lack of effort. Um, all right, so I understand what the board is saying, and I appreciate the comments, especially as to density, and I appreciate the board's support, you know, and even with the decrease with the special permit. I know that we've, uh, continued for some time, and I know the board, uh, would like us to try to wrap these things up, but I do have a new client on board. Uh, and I do, I do know that they're on the line today, and they've been working on it and reviewing the numbers. So I would appreciate the board allowing us at least one more continuance so that we can consider, uh, the comments and then decide how to proceed, but we will do that prior to your November meeting.
Melissa, can I ask you one question for clarification? I think the last, these units are all the same size. It was like three, 1303 at 14 something. That's all still, on this new plan, those, those units are the same?
Those are the foundations. I think the actual living area is like 2,000.
Compared to the last plan we have, the, the, the sizes haven't changed of the buildings at all.
Right, yeah, they've just been spaced out.
All right, thank you.
I think, I think one other comment too, uh, Melissa, is that we were, um, so much concerned with trying to pull the whatever homes that are on this lot away from the Shoba Valley.
Right.
Then, because, you know, obviously that is close to the, uh, the tiki bar during the summer, so, um, that, that was just a concern that I thought we had in the past too.
Yeah, we've tried to respect that with this plan. This plan still keeps the, the closest unit, unit three, well with over, well over 700 feet away from the tiki bar. And we are, if we do proceed with any size project out here, we would, uh, we would supply some sort of landscaping along that buffer to have some sound deafening and also to put restrictions in any of these residential units so that they know that there's an outdoor recreational facility next door and they couldn't, uh, file suit for them for a nuisance.
The other thing that I want to comment on, far as noise and nuisances, um, you know, in, in the back you have, um, J.D. Raymond grinding back mulch. You get ideal block, naked blocks. So I think that those two need to be included, um, in the noise factor. Because, you know, this is what came first, the chicken or the egg? So, um, you have to include those two also.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and we will look at that.
Melissa, just a suggestion. If you moved the driveway in the circle down towards the tiki bar that way and predominantly have the houses on the upper, upper side along that strip, you'd be further away then with, substantially further away.
Oh, flip the entire circle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure. Uh, these are 1,400 square foot units. The board has expressed, I'm fine with the six units. I think the applicant's done a lot of work towards what we've been guiding them to do. I look at the overall product of what's there, the square footage, including the barn, which some guys don't consider. I think it's relatively almost equal. So if they come back with five units, but they increase the square footage, I guess my question is to the rest of the board, how would you feel about that?
Scott, I don't, I don't think the barn is relevant because we're talking about, what was there is housing.
Yeah, I thought, I thought there was the three-bedroom houses here, weren't there?
Landscaping equipment and tractors and hoes and rakes. I don't think that's, that's apples to oranges. We're talking about that square footage of building there. I think we just count the non-residential buildings there and just compare what residential space has been there versus this proposed residential. Those boxes, I mean, they're irrelevant. I mean, they just stored landscaping stuff. No one lived there, no one had a bathroom there, no one had a bedroom there. No one had a kid going to school from there. Those were barns. I don't think you could be a barn.
I totally agree, but I just look at it differently, that's all, Jimmy.
Yeah, I understand, but I think, I, I have discounted those buildings that aren't residential in my own mind on that.
Scott, to answer your question, I'd support a little bigger, but it'd have to maintain three bedrooms, but the living space could be a little bigger.
I think, I think the applicant deserves a little guidance. If they do go down to five, obviously it comes to financial reasons if they can go forward with the project, which I am in favor because of what's there, we all know is an ISO. So anything's going to be better than what's there now. They're all five units, but they can include.
They're all two-bedroom, correct?
No, they, they're three bedrooms.
They're all, I think with two and three, so all three?
Yeah, we think that, we think that not all of the units will use the third bedroom. It would be considered an o, an office, but for border health purposes, it'd all be considered three.
Okay, okay.
You know, and the other thing is, at 1,400 square feet, new construction, they will be somewhat affordable in this town, whereas everything is over 2,400 square feet that's being built. From that aspect, I like the project as well because it brings the price point of these new buildings down to somewhat affordability.
Well, it's funny, it's funny that you raised that, uh, that concern, Scott, because I was actually thinking of going the same route, and I won't, won't repeat a thing that you said, but I certainly would support letting them get a little bit bigger too.
You also.
I, I agree with him.
Affordable, Bob, that had, you, you mentioned at the last meeting a possibility considering they're affordable? You did mention that at the last meeting, one affordable unit?
Well, I did, but he also, uh, I, 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 he came back to me, and I don't know whether it was at the meeting or not. And he said with six units, he couldn't do it.
Okay.
Well, um, do we have enough information then? Are we, uh, prepared to have a motion to continue this? And just to answer a, a comment that you made, Melissa, uh, Scott McKay, the Vice Chairman, was actually the one that brought it up to me too about some of these applications continuing, continuing, continuing. But at least in your case, I do feel that we are moving forward, so I'm not sure that, uh, you know, it's appropriate for us to get too upset with you. Uh, so is there a motion to continue this? What's the date, what's the date November, Rebecca?
Mr. Chair. Can you, do you want to go to the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, what's the date for November 1st?
18.
That's going to be the 18th.
Okay, yes, uh, any comment from the audience? Is there an audience at all?
Uh, there is, and I have a question. Um, Kate?
Hi, Kate Hollister, 25 Vinebrook Road. Speaking as in a butter, I, I appreciate, uh, your due diligence on this. I like that comment about putting the entrance from the other direction, so that the houses could be clustered in the, in the area where there actually is space for houses, and it might get it further away from the wetlands. Uh, I just basically had a couple of comments. The first is I did look at the, uh, I was not able to participate in the August one, but I did look at what you had. And, um, I do, I'm not sure that I agree with the owner about, um, the fact that it has, that it has been in continuous, um, residence in the houses. Therefore, the non-conformant was still valid. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Because, um, because, uh, we do drive by this every day, and I walk my dog there. And, uh, yes, people have been storing cars there for short term and storing trailers there and stuff, but we've never seen any indication of anybody actually living in the house or any, either of the houses for the last four or five years. So, uh, I'm not sure I agree with, with the owner on that. Uh, the other thing is, um, if they had, um, I don't mind the houses there, I think it's a good use. The alternative to going to you would be to go to town meetings to get it rezoned residential. And if they did that, then I think by creative lot lines, they could probably get four or five house lots on this parcel. So, uh, six is, uh, close to that. Um, and as Melissa said, these units are about 2,000 square feet or so, I believe. She said in three-bedroom, and I think there is, there is a need for houses in that size in the town. We, we tend to gear everything towards the low income and the very high income, and we don't often get a lot of houses. We don't, or I haven't seen any in the long, for several years of houses that, for people uh, in, in the middle income bracket. So this would be nice if they were actually geared towards people in the middle income bracket and not sold as luxury house condos. My other thing is, um, if they are purchasing that right-of-way, that would be really nice. I know that there are kids in the neighborhood who have wanted to get summer jobs at Kimball's, but they had no way to get to Kimball's. So if there were a way to, um, create a, a publicly accessible trail from, from Powers Road down to as far as possible, that would be really helpful. Uh, six houses, it depends on how the alignment is. As I said, if, if they come in from the other direction, it might be a better design for six houses. And, uh, the planning boards, when it comes before them, they might ask why it's not a U-shaped driveway since our bylaw does allow, uh, a common driveway for five houses. And, and that would be, I think, I don't know if a U-shaped one would be better for, um, hire trucks and such or not. Those are my thoughts, thank you, over.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Uh, you know, the applicant, because of what we have, uh, given direction tonight with the five as opposed to six, is certainly going to have to go back to the drawing board. So your comments, I feel, will be probably incorporated in whatever they come back with too. Is there anyone else out there?
Um, let me look, hold on. Um, no, that's it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could interject, um, you know, my clients have really taken a hard look at this project, and they really don't think they can go any lower than six. They know six is the number. Um, you've given them an awful lot to consider, but given the nature of this application and that we've been with you, uh, for a while, I think it would probably be best for us to withdraw. Um, I don't want to waste the board's time and energy trying to pursue a project that's not going to be feasible for the client. Um, I do hear your comments, and I appreciate your concerns, but I think in the best interest of the board and the client, I think at this point, instead of continuing, it would be in the best interest to withdraw the application.
Okay.
Oh, 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 okay, if that's, uh, if that's your desire. I am a little bit disappointed, but not totally surprised. What's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote in the affirmative. All right, Counselor, appreciate your time and your thoughts, and maybe you can. All right, Counselor, appreciate your time and your thoughts and maybe you can come back with something else.
Agreed, thank you, and I do appreciate the board's time and energy on this project.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for working with Melissa.
All right, next, uh, item on the agenda is 25 Carlisle Road. An application of Laurie Stewart, trustee of Eastwood Farms Realty Trust for special permit to build an ADU. Is there a motion to waive the entire reading of public notice?
So moved. Second.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. I believe we have counsel representing this applicant too, is that correct?
Yes, uh, for the record again, attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of DeShane and Farrell. Uh, Mr. Chair, if, if I can proceed, I could give the board a little overview. Uh, I know that Ms. Stewart is on the phone with us this evening. Also, uh, with us is the architect of the, of the plans that you actually have open right now, Larry Reeves, and also the practice manager, Cheryl Culver. Uh, right now, the project, the property at 25 Carlisle Road currently contains a home and a veterinary dermatology clinic. The board may be familiar with it. Uh, the house and the structures were built in approximately 1930 and they were used for various, uh, home and retail purposes, although honestly, off the top of my head, the only one I can remember before the vet is the curtain business that was there before. Uh, and after the curtain business, uh, Lori came in about 20 years ago and received variance to put the occupation of a veterinary dermatology in there. Uh, Lori would like to obtain a special permit to convert the existing garage and storage area into an ADU unit. Uh, the ADU unit that you can see is in full conformance with section 3.3 of the zoning board of appeals bylaw. Uh, the first requirement is that we cannot exceed 33% of the existing floor area. Uh, this unit does not exceed 33% of the floor area, and I think that is actually referenced in your staff report, so I won't labor that issue. Uh, the second standard is that if the dwelling is located in an accessory structure, that the accessory structure must be at least 10 years old. Uh, this structure is part of the original structure that was built in 1930, so we certainly meet that requirement. Uh, the third requirement, and I won't read the, the full standard, but it then change the outward appearance, uh, from looking like a residential structure. And then there's subparts of that structure, of that condition. Uh, we cannot create 15% more gross living, uh, gross floor space of the structure than exists there today. Uh, this is, this is actually creating no more, uh, structure. The only change is going to be to the outside of the structure. Uh, any stairway access or egress alteration must be covered. And that actually gets to the point of my outside alteration. You can see on the top of the screen there, new portico covered entrance on the top left. That will be the only outside change to the structure and that just to be in conformance with the section of the bylaw. Uh, we have to have sufficient and appropriate space for at least one, uh, parking area. And as you can see, uh, the garage is being remodeled as part of this redevelopment of the barn. There'll be two parking spaces and one of those will be exclusively for the ADU. Uh, before you ask me about the other parking on the site, I will let you know that this project went through site plan review, uh, in 2001. It required, uh, three parking spaces, uh, set parking spaces on pavement and then five parking spaces more either in the front of the unit and behind the barn. And if you're familiar with the site, you would know that there's at least, uh, area for at least 10 or 12 cars in that area. So we more than meet that requirement. Uh, but in any case, we have plenty of space inside for the one additional car. Uh, and there's only one resident, uh, Ms. Stewart, that lives in the existing structure. So we're talking about two residents total. Uh, the final standard is that all construction and our reservation, uh, renovation shall be performed in accordance with the code. Um, as you can see, the plans have already been designed. Uh, I did write in my cover letter that we had had approval from the Board of Health, but I guess I was a liar because she was waiting for a certificate on the, uh, Title Five, which she has since received, so I've redeemed myself. And now we actually have Board of Health approval for the expanded system to allow for this bedroom and the living area in this space. Um, I do have Mr. Reeves on the line, which I would like to turn him on briefly so he can just give you an overview of the layout of the unit and the design. Um, Matt Salem, if you wouldn't mind just turning him on.
Hey. Hello, everybody. Uh, I, I, I don't know if you get to see me or if you just get to hear me, but, uh, I can see the plans, so that, that works for me. Uh, let's see, and, and, and just for reference, I am Larry, Larry Reeves and I'm, uh, owner of, uh, Reeves Design Associates. And I have been working with, uh, with, uh, Laurie Stewart and, uh, Sherri Culver on, on this layout. Um, and, and the whole goal, uh, from, from the beginning was really to be able to provide a, uh, a unit that, that, uh, potentially Laurie's, uh, mother could move into or, um, but, or, or as an option, uh, if, if depending on circumstances, things have changed these days, um, that, that also potentially could be, uh, one of the employees. Um, she employs, uh, interns that would be very helpful as, uh, students to have a place to stay close to the office as an office, as an option. So that, that approach to this is very definitely is a, um, as an accessory, uh, use here. Um, and, uh, the, the fun part was that we're, we're working with the existing barn that, that was almost a, uh, a federal colonial looking, uh, structure. It had, had some of the details, but hadn't been really pulled together fully, or they'd been changed enough over the years that it wasn't, uh, wasn't really very pretty anymore. But we, we did focus on, um, sort of re-establishing the building as, as a, uh, kind of a formal colonial structure as a, as a secondary, in this case, as a secondary structure to the, to the main house. And, and then keeping all of our work to the inside, uh, we, we did, as, as Melissa mentioned, we did do a, and, uh, a primary entrance feature, um, off there on, on the upper, upper left corner of the building. And, and I will, will throw in, um, in the process, there was also an existing at-grade access to a basement level that's, um, in, in the middle of the structure. Um, actually, it's right, kind of the, the area sort of below the master bedroom, that center section of the building actually has a full height, uh, basement in, in that area or originally did. Uh, we've, we've since dropped the floor down so that it's now, uh, still a more of a mechanical space, uh, with about a five or six foot head, head height in there. But to access that, we do have a, uh, covered, uh, stair access down that is adjacent, that is located adjacent to the portico that, uh, that's shown. So, so for reference, that's, that is in there. Uh, we, rather than just have a standard bulkhead, we do have a, a, a full covered element. I don't know if we can maybe, maybe scroll and take a look at the, the outside. Uh, there we go. I think if, uh, you can kind of see, obviously the, the current exterior has a lot happening with it. The original, we actually have the original, I'm not sure if we, if the existing elevations are, uh, are in the package here. Probably on sheet one or two, I'm going to guess. So, there we go. So that, that is the, you know, this, this was the, when, when I, I saw it the first time, this is what, what I was looking at. Um, so it had, had some intention of being a, um, a, a colonial structure, a fairly formal, um, treatment there, but had, had been played with a whole bunch, uh, in, in its lifetime. So I think then kind of back to the, I think it was sheet three there, the, um, what, what we had proposed. Um, we, we do have all of, all of the window, uh, windows that are shown are, are now in. We've, we've reworked trims, um, across the board have, uh, um, you know, done quite a bit. We, we do have a few, a few elements here. I think the panels in between the upper windows are now, um, are, are, uh, shingles, uh, shingle siding, uh, rather than, uh, panel treatments, but it still is, has this, holds the, the same general quality and character to the, to the building. I think that was, that was, you know, the, the point of doing the work here, um, you know, just, just renovating a barn, uh, with the extent of effort that, that was going into it, it, it felt like, you know, it would be a missed opportunity to, um, you know, knowing that, that there's a very real potential need here for, for an auxiliary unit for the owner. Um, that, that just, that, that justifies sort of the extra cost to, to go into the, the aesthetics and really create a nice special structure. I think that's, um, if there are any questions, glad, uh, glad to address them.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you. Uh, I do want the.
I thought it was important, Mr. Chair, just to go through the architecture because so much focus was given to it, especially bringing the outside structure, uh, making it beautiful. So I thought that it was nice to just run through that quickly. I did miss one condition, uh, that the resident must live there at least six months of the year. Uh, as I indicated, uh, Laurie Stewart is a residence in the home, with her home occupation at the veterinary dermatology clinic. Uh, she lives there year round and has lived there 20 years. So, uh, we will easily fulfill that requirement and would put all deed restrictions in place, uh, so that when the unit got sold, that this unit would not go with it without the permission of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Um, okay, couple, a couple of things. I want the record to reflect that we did have a, uh, a letter from Scott Clark, Clark Property Development, which is a, uh, a director, but a, in support of the project. Uh, Melissa, I have one question before I open it to the board.
Sure.
Um, you, you kind of touched upon it. Part of the question is to you and then part of the question is to Rebecca. Somewhere in this documentation, and I can't put my finger on it right now, you just mentioned, she has agreed to live there six months, so she's, she does not live there year round?
No, no, it's a requirement of the permit that a resident, that there, that it be a primary resident of the person that's asking for the ADU. So a person must live there six months, a year to be considered a resident of the town of Westford, and she far exceeds that because she lived there year round and has lived there for 20 years. So she meets that requirement.
Okay, okay. I, I, I thought, I thought so. I misunderstood, I misunderstood what you said then. And so that being, that being said, I do not have any question for Rebecca. Uh, questions for the applicant?
I, I don't have a question. Well, I guess I do have a question. Um, when we do these ADUs, I think it's the intention of the board for these ADUs to be for a family member or something of that nature so they can either age in place, a younger generation gets to move into the house or whatever the circumstances are. And in reading the information, I didn't see anything about that, but however, when Mr. Reeves was on, he was saying that her mother is going to live there or possibly interns that she hires is going to live there. So I want some clarification from Melissa, I guess. Is this true?
Yes, uh, right now.
Before.
Oh, sorry.
Before, but, before she does that, if you'll just excuse me for a second, Counselor. I've had that same concern over a number of these, Scott, but Rebecca has reminded me more than once that nothing in our bylaw says that it has to be a family member. Is that correct, Rebecca?
Yes.
That is correct, and I can read the, I can read the regulations out to you if you'd like, but that's true.
That's why, that's why I said it was, it's the board's intention that this is what we have given these permits out because of that situation. It may not be in the bylaw, we understand that, but however, a lot of times, boards have intentions or thoughts about these things, how we base our opinions. Um, so I guess going back to the, my original question, is someone's mother going to live there or is it? Or both? Or whatever?
I'm happy to answer, Mr. Chair. I know that, uh, the intention and putting the design together was certainly so that her mother, her mother, who is 90 right now and living in New Hampshire, uh, could move down to this, uh, area. We're having some logistical difficulties given the COVID situation and moving her back down to Massachusetts right now, um, and some other logistical issues. But the, uh, that certainly was the intention in the layout and design. I think if that doesn't happen, Ms. Stewart's intention is to try to rent this out to an intern or to somebody that she knows. As I've indicated, uh, she lives in that single family residence, uh, alone, and this would be, you know, if, if it's not rented to her mother, it'd be for an additional income, but it would certainly be a very selective person as, uh, she wouldn't be just putting a random person in there.
Well, the first, I'm looking at the first sentence in the bylaw under accessory dwelling units. I think Rebecca went through this before. Provide small additional dwelling units to rent without adding to the number of buildings in the town or substantially altering the appearance of the town. The first thing is, the first premise is to provide small additional dwelling units to rent. It does say it enables owners to accommodate families, but the first provision clearly says it can be rented, it can be, it can be used for renting.
And that, and that's why, and that's why Rebecca has corrected me more than once. I understand what you're saying, Scott.
So I guess, I, I don't have a problem with it, especially having been a small business owner in town. If it's a way for her to, let's call it entice employees or as a perk for employees, I think I'm all for it. Um, but I would, I would condition it on that.
I don't think we can.
No. Yeah, I would.
Hey, Bob?
Yes, Dave?
Yeah, we've been through this too many times. What she's asking for is okay in the bylaw, she can rent it to whoever. Hopefully this will work for her mother, but, you know, there are some extenuating circumstances. So this is a good thing. We need a additional places in the town, so I, I, we were kind of wasting our time, I think.
No, I, I, I agree, I agree. I, I think the whole intent of the bylaw was to, uh, uh, produce some other, other desired types of, uh, rental property, if you will. But anyways, I don't think we can condition it, Scott.
That's correct, Bob, and it would not be, it wouldn't be a defensible decision if we did put something like that in there, so, or defensible condition, so.
Is there anyone, uh, here to speak in opposition to this request?
Um, I do not see anyone with a hand raised, so it doesn't look like there's anyone to speak in any, in any case.
Okay. Are we all set then, gentlemen, to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Jay?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? This is just a special permit, Rebecca, correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the special permit?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. And I also will vote me affirmative. Excuse me, and I don't think I have to give you the procedure, Counselor, do I?
Do we condition on these plans that were submitted?
What's that?
Do we condition on these plans that we've looked at that seem to be very, very well done?
Thank you, James, thank you, yes. This webinar kind of puts me off my balance here at times.
Tell me about it.
Yeah.
Take the plans of June 29th, which look like very well-done plans.
Yeah. Were there any other conditions or thoughts, gentlemen? I hope it's not too late. I guess not. All right, Melissa, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'll leave you alone for the evening now.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good job. All right, next item on the agenda, under general business. Hanover Westford Valley and Hanover Westford Hills want to establish an escrow account to accept a fee in lieu of satisfying transportation conditions of approval. Any thoughts on this, gentlemen? I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either. No.
I think you need to account for inflation.
You are a beauty, McKay.
You've got a date, you've got a figure for today. If the COVID thing keeps up and everything keeps going the way it is, you're not going to be able to test or do anything for a year, two, three. Now, if you can lock these people in, that are going to do the test for that number, I'm all for it. If you can't, you need to add some money on.
Rebecca, didn't I see we're actually there willing to give more than what we wanted?
Yes, we have some existing accounts from these two developments that we can dip into if we need to in the future if this number doesn't cover what, you know, to Scott's point, if there is some inflation happening or some added expense. We have other accounts available to dip into.
But the language covers that, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Bob, can I stop you just for a second? Would someone mind reading the suggested motion in the packet? It's kind of lengthy, but-
Thank you very much, yeah.
If one of you doesn't mind, it would be helpful.
I did intend to do that and I forgot all about it. Does everybody have that? Does somebody want to read that motion?
All right, all right. That the board finds that due to the COVID-19 pandemic resulting in changes in the traffic patterns and volume, the purpose of the condition of approval E1B and E2, in parentheses, decision, Board of Appeals 1704 CP and E3, decision of Board of Appeals 1634 CP, relative to traffic monitoring, will be better served by accepting a fee in lieu and as in detail in correspondence from the Hanover Company to the Board Chair dated October 16th, 2020, and hereby authorize staff to accept monies and to establish escrow and further find that this will satisfy the aforementioned conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. And the other item is 40 Main Street, Muffins on Main, a request for a minor modification to authorize a conversion of two off-street parking spaces to one area. Is any questions? If not, is there a motion to do so?
Bob, may I just interrupt you for a minute? We do have Ellen Hardy here. I don't know if she wants to, if she has anything to say or wants to give an overview or anything.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hardy?
It's just Ellen Hardy, who's the owner is here, and she may like to say something if we want to give her an opportunity to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I think the argument is clear in my letter, but I certainly am available to answer any questions that members of the board may have. These are two parking spaces that we were required, in the last variance that you gave us, that were two spaces for off-street parking for the Muffins on Main. We, in fact, have never used them because customers prefer to park on Main Street so they don't have to back into Main Street. And since COVID, when we have no indoor seating, the Board of Health actually gave us permission, which the governor allowed, to use parking area for seating. So we have two tables and four chairs there for outdoor seating. It's been a very popular spot to have that outdoor seating. So we're asking your permission to permanently have those be grassed over so we could use them for parking in the future if you require it. But for now, do have two tables and chairs out there in warm weather so we can have four outdoor seats in addition to the indoor seating at Muffins on Main. I think it would be a visual improvement to the building to have grass there rather than blacktop. And that's what we ask you to do, to make a further amendment to your previous variances from 2016 and 2017. Thank you.
You're welcome. I agree wholeheartedly. I think the grass would look better and I'm very, very pleased to see that this COVID-19 did not put any of you out of business.
We're grateful for that, too. People have been astoundingly supportive and we thank the community.
Any questions at all?
I have a question, Bob.
David? Yeah.
As we approve this, it would strike me that, is there any way this, could we sort of put in this that if they wanted to put a tent there, they could, this approval would not preclude it? I'm not sure they ever want to, but inclement weather is coming.
Rebecca?
Well, Ellen can speak to this also, but I think in her proposal, she has from May to October. So I don't know that, I mean, certainly there's inclement weather throughout the year, but, so I don't know that that's necessary. And I think that's more of a building question, the building department question than it is.
I'm thinking of Paul's, pardon, I'm thinking of Paul's Diner. They have a dent in the parking lot and I suspect they've not had to go through a bunch of permits to do that. I mean, it's kind of an emergency.
Thank you, David. That's, if I could speak to that, you're very thoughtful to think that. There are two big differences. Paul's Diner's entire business is predicated on indoor dining and people staying there. Muffins on Main is 85% people coming and getting their item and leaving. So in-store seating is not the majority of Pam's business. And aesthetically, as the owner of the building, I really would not want to have anything as invasive as a tent. We have two umbrellas over the two tables and aesthetically, that's all. I would want Pam to have theirs landlord. So I appreciate the thought, but I think what we've requested for just the tables with umbrellas and four chairs is all-
Ellen, do you anticipate putting a heater out there?
I think, no. Then by the time the winter comes, we will then go back. At the moment, we can only have six chairs inside with COVID. But because so much of Pam's business is takeout, she's able to survive that way. So we're doing okay with this as it is. We'll be delighted when we can have all the seats back inside. But as it is now, it's adequate. It seems to be serving people's muffins and stone needs. Thank you.
Ellen, this is Chip Siniak. Can I make a suggestion or make a comment? You don't take it or leave it. Unrelated to this request, I think it's a wise decision. I think it's very appropriate, that location. I go by there all the time based on where I live. Sometimes it's pretty busy if people park on the other side of the street. A lot of their cars without a lot of due diligence as to what traffic is coming. And I know it may not, may be a little bit obtrusive, but maybe during busy times, a side, what do you call it, perhaps a sandwich board on that sidewalk that might say, please look before you open your door or look before- I can just envision somebody opening a door there and getting smacked by a big truck or a kid not thinking and running away from a parent. I've honestly seen it, gone by there a couple of times where I hit my brakes anticipating, you know, two people talking to each other and they're walking across the street. Just a suggestion, take it or leave it, but in the interest of safety, if that wasn't too obtrusive during a busy, you know, maybe Saturdays or Sundays when you're busy, busy mornings, take it in, put it out there, then take it in when it's not so busy. May help somebody be a little more heads up when they're exiting their car on the, across the street from the front door.
We would also lobby largely for people to notice that the speed limit in front of the shop is 25 miles an hour and that would help us a lot if people-
That would help as well, as well, I agree.
We certainly will work with-
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinayak. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Bob, can I, can I ask you to do a couple of technical things?
Yeah.
Could you, could you make a finding that this is a minor modification or a minor change? And then take a second vote to approve?
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion to consider as a minor modification?
So moved.
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Now, is there a motion to approve?
I'll vote as well, Bob.
I'm sorry, Paul, I lost my G P here.
No problem.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Rebecca?
Paul?
Yes.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Rebecca, I don't see anything, I don't see anything else.
That's correct, there's nothing else.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Scott McKay?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Matt, thank you very much. Rebecca, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
And I won't bother asking the usual question, Rebecca, because I guess you can't help us.
Well, I will tell you that I did ask about the, I can't remember, Bob, it was you or maybe it was Jim, but someone was asking why the school committee was allowed to meet in person. And they are under a different provision of state law which has to do with school gatherings. They're under some sort of school umbrella, which is aside from or apart from boards and committees. So they have a special kind of dispensation to meet. So that's the reason that they're allowed to meet and other boards and committees are not. But yeah, it looks like we're in this for the long haul.
Thank you very much. Good night, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks.